Which takes us to the Board of Trustees meeting at long last, if it's only 4:45. Thank you, everyone, for hanging in there with us today. Lots of good work done by the various committees. So thank you all, chairs, for your leadership and your hard work. We'll let the trustees who are -- let everybody grab a seat at the table before I call to order. We're recording already, so I'm assuming we don't need to do anything special there. Okay. Let's call to order the meeting of the State Bar Board of Trustees for July 21st and 22nd, 2022. Good afternoon, everyone. This is Chairman Ruben Duran. Could we please have the roll call?
Bratton? Chen?
Here.
Cisneros?
Here.
De La Cruz?
Here.
Delann? Just give me one second. Let me see if trustee Delann is in the attendee pool. Okay, she is. I will promote her. Trustee Delann shall be joining shortly.
I'm here.
I'm here.
Thank you. Duran?
Present.
And our newest member, Noel. Trustee Noel, are you there? I see trustee Noel is present but muted. Okay. Sileg? Shelby?
Present.
Sol? Stallings?
Here, here.
Tony?
Present.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, trustees. Our agenda calls for public comment first. So this is the portion of the meeting where members of the public are invited and welcome to address the Board of Trustees on any item on our agenda today or on any item of interest to the Board and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Trustees. If you are desirous of speaking, please indicate your desire to do so by using the raise hand function on Zoom. If you're calling in by phone, that is star nine, if I'm not mistaken. And we will have a limit of three minutes per speaker. Once you're recognized and your microphone is enabled, please, please join us. Madam Secretary, is there anybody indicating a desire to speak to the Board of Trustees?
We have two members of the public who wish to provide public comment. First is Betty Williams, CLA Vice President.
Ms. Williams, welcome.
Thank you. You know, I left my hand raised again because during the last presentation for the Regulation and Discipline, I had so many questions and my hand was up. I put it up and down, up and down. Nobody was catching it. So can you guys -- who's supposed to look? Or is there an email I can send? Because I sent one email to one person saying, you know, who's watching this? But I, you know, I've got questions, want to participate. Other than telling -- right now, I have no questions for you, but in half an hour, I may. So how do I get recognized if this isn't working?
Thanks for the question, Ms. Williams. So I have to point out that generally questioning back and forth from members of the public is not a part of our standard process. The public has the opportunity to provide comment to the Board of Trustees at this portion of the meeting, at the beginning. So if you have a question or a comment on any of our agenda items, we ask that you do that at this time. There's also always the opportunity to submit written comments via email, which I believe is all as instructed on our website. But generally, once public comment has been taken and the Board is receiving a staff report and the Board is deliberating an item, there's not generally a back and forth with the public, so.
I understand that. I guess when the gentleman commented and said, please, you know, stop me with your questions, I guess he was speaking just to your board, so thank you.
I believe he was. Yes, thank you.
I would also offer, Ms. Williams, that you could submit any questions that you have to me directly or, of course, as the chief trial counsel. And I'm sure to the extent we're able, we'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, who's speaking? Because I can't tell from this view.
Sorry. This is Leah Wilson, the executive director.
Thank you, Leah. Appreciate it.
We're happy to have you join us, though, in any event, Ms. Williams. And thank you for your work with the CLA.
Thanks.
Okay, so no questions or comments other than that?
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have a phone number ending in 6185. Your microphone has been enabled and you should be able to address the Board.
Hi, this is Selena Copeland, Executive Director of the Legal Aid Association of California, and I'm calling in to give a comment in support of an item you will likely take up tomorrow, given the late hour. In strong support of item number 706, the Recommendation from Legal Services Trust Fund Commission on the IOLTA Grant Awards for 2023. And just really briefly, the commission and State Bar staff has done a really amazing job of figuring out how much funding to put out in 2023, given the uncertainty in our current economy, given uncertainty with what we expect to get from interest on lawyer trust accounts next year. This represents -- the memo is quite long, but it also represents a significant amount of work done by State Bar staff. So I'm in strong support of the Board of Trustees approving that agenda item. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Copeland. Good to hear from you again. Any other public comment?
We do not have any other members of the public who wish to address the Board.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. So Ms. Copeland actually just alluded to one of the things that I wanted to, by way of introduction, go over with the Board, and that is the relatively late hour. I mean, I remember the days when the late hour meant 7:00, 7:30. But we do have a full agenda, and so I would like to at least get started on some of what we have on the plate today. In particular, because we have been working with a consultant whose time is reserved for this portion of the day, this portion of the meeting, item 701, the Rules of Order and Voting Procedures, I'm going to ask that the Board indulge me and let me change the agenda order a little bit so that we can take up that item before we adjourn for the afternoon. And I propose that we do that after the approval of the minutes, my brief oral report, Ms. Wilson's brief oral report, and then the consent calendar, assuming there are no items from the consent calendar that will be pulled for extensive discussion. So let me ask there, on the consent calendar, do we have any items that any trustee wants to pull so we can figure out where to put that in the agenda?
Mr. Chair, this is Brandon. I do need to have the appointment item pulled so I can recuse myself.
So I believe that we can note your recusal for the record without having to remove it from the consent calendar agenda, Mr. Vice Chair. So we'll do that at the appropriate time. Tell me which item it was again?
Item 50-3.
Officers and members of the State Bar Subentities. Okay, so the secretary will note for the record, Vice Chair Stallings, recusal on Okay. All that sound good? Wonderful. Item 10 is the approval of the minutes for the May 19th and 20th open session, the June 7th open session, and the June 13th open session. So any trustee have any additions, corrections, or other comments on the minutes as presented?
Cisneros, I'll move it up, Chen.
Motion by Cisneros.
I'll second.
Second by De La Cruz. Can we have a roll call, please?
Bratton? Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
De La Cruz?
Yes.
Delann?
Yes.
Noel?
Absent.
Sileg?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony? Eight ayes, two absent, one abstain, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. That takes us to my brief oral report. And I'd like to start by recognizing the new face on the screen. I think probably not a new name to everyone, but certainly very, very pleased and excited to welcome a new trustee to the Board. Mr. Greg Noel is the Senate Pro Tem's attorney appointment to the Board, and we're very happy to have that seat filled. I had the pleasure of speaking with Mr. Noel and Vice Chair Stallings by way of introduction. But I do want to welcome you to the Board, sir. And if you wouldn't mind, we'd love to hear a brief introduction, any way you'd like to give it.
Sure. Thank you very much. It was a pleasure talking to you and Mr. Stallings. And I've also met with Louisa and with Leah, who have been just fabulous in trying to welcome me to the Board. I have been the chief counsel and CEO of the Legal Aid Society of San Diego for a long time and have worked with the State Bar for a long time. I was on one of the very first beginnings of the Legal Services Committee that started at the State Bar, way back. I've also been one of the only legal aid people on COPRA. I served two trips there. I'm very honored by being on this Board of Trustees, and I've been watching today the committee meetings up to this meeting. You are all to be congratulated for the volunteerism that you provide here. I know it's a great deal of work, and I applaud you for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg, and once again, welcome. We do have an item of business related to your appointment, following up on the conversation that we had. And so I'm going to ask the secretary to put on the screen the resolution by which the Board will appoint you or ratify your appointment to committees. And so for those of you who are on the phone, I will just say that I would like to appoint Mr. Noel to the Executive Committee and the Regulation and Discipline Committee effective today and henceforth. So any questions from any of the Board members? Mr. Noel, if you'd like to make any comments on the appointment, please, this is your opportunity.
No, I accept those appointments if the Board feels they're appropriate. I think I've talked with you and Mr. Stallings about which committees, and I think these are appropriate.
Great. We look forward to your active participation and your, I think, very valuable perspective with your long professional background on these committees. Can I have a motion, please, on the resolution?
Mr. Chair, this is Brandon. I'll move it.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Stallings, second by Chen. And we have the roll.
Bratton? Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
De La Cruz?
Yes.
Delann?
Yes.
Thank you. Noel?
I guess yes.
I would hope so. I'd be a little worried, sir, if you didn't.
Sileg?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
Sol? Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
Nine ayes, two absent, no nays, the motion carries.
Wonderful. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to move on to another piece of very, very good news, which I think everyone here has heard or even seen at some point or another, but I do want to take the opportunity to let those of us who -- to let those of you who are joining us know that the Senate has unanimously confirmed the Board's nomination of Mr. George Cardona as the State Bar's Chief Trial Counsel. I was honored and privileged to go to Sacramento to speak at Mr. Cardona's confirmation hearing, and he did just a wonderful job in front of the Senate Rules Committee. Just great to have him on board, as we all know, over these last several months, but even more gratifying to see the interaction between him and those committee members and ultimately the unanimous vote at the Rules Committee and the unanimous vote on the floor of the Senate. So congratulations, Mr. Cardona. And I would say welcome, but obviously, you're here, and we're all very glad for it. We thank Senate Pro Tem Atkins and the Rules Committee for their work, and certainly we thank the legislature for continuing to partner with the State Bar in what is truly the most important thing that we do here, which is discipline and protecting the public in charge by you, sir. So I look forward to a long tenure succeeding under your direction. Okay. Sort of another piece of important good news, and that is the State Bar has hired a new general counsel. So I will hand the mic over to Vice Chair Stallings, who was the chair of the search committee for that important position, and allow him to make the announcement.
All right. I just want to thank everybody who served on the committee, who interviewed candidates. We had an incredible pool that we were able to choose from, and we had the opportunity, Mr. Chair and myself, of extending an offer to Aline Devtian, and she has accepted. She will be joining us in August, August 18th. She joins us from the LA Care Health Plan, which is the nation's largest public health plan, serving over 2.5 million people in Los Angeles County. And at that agency, she most recently served as senior associate general counsel. She obtained her BA from UC Irvine and her JD from Southwestern University School of Law. She has wide-ranging experience that really impressed members of the committee, and her experience and her work as a public sector lawyer, which really dovetails with what we do here at the Bar, leading team members with excellence and integrity. She's a fierce collaborator and looks forward to filling vacancies in OGC with more mission-driven, high-caliber legal professionals like those who currently fill our ranks over there at OGC. So we look forward to having her onboard, and we thank Mr. Rotana for serving as acting GC during the transition period. So back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Brandon. I will echo the thanks for Mr. Rotana for filling in during this important time and truly the service that you've given in the office. I look forward to seeing a positive working relationship develop with you and Ms. Devtian. I would like to, again, not only thank Brandon, but the members of the search committee for the work that they did, many hours of reviewing candidates and interviewing and bringing to the Board very qualified finalists. So Ms. Devtian, I think, will be a good addition to the State Bar, and I look forward to working with her and integrating her into now what we have is finally a full executive team, which I think is going to work very well together. I would like to just very briefly update the Board on the status of AB 2958, which is our annual fee bill, carried this year by the Assembly Judiciary Committee chaired by Chairman Mark Stone. That bill has been introduced and subsequently amended at committee at the Senate Judiciary, I believe, is where that last happened. Ms. Wilson and I and others were present to testify on the fee bill as there were some changes that we're seeking, and we're in the process of, I think, some very good conversations with legislative staff and with the committee chairs, and we're hoping that those conversations lead to further amendments to the bill in efforts for us to continue doing what we want to do to protect the public and increase access to justice. Ms. Wilson, is there anything you want to add on the fee bill, other than just we're sort of, we're still, we're still working on it?
No, but I do think I'd love to recognize you in front of the Board and the public because you've been really tireless in your work on this, and I appreciate it very much. So I'd like to say that here.
That's very kind of you to say, and that's not why I gave her the mic, but thank you. And really, just truly to my colleagues on the Board, especially the legislative liaisons, as we've been talking about refining this language in the bill in meaningful ways for the protection of the public, it's been, it is and has been a great collaborative effort, and I feel like we're close to bringing it over the finish line, and, you know, I think we'll get there. To the extent any of you have relationships in the legislature and would like to put in a good word for our fee bill, I would highly recommend that you do so. Certainly, the value of having a Board as diverse as ours is that there are many relationships throughout the state, and so I would encourage you and applaud any of those efforts that you could make on behalf of the organization. And finally, the last part of my chair's report is a little bit bittersweet insofar as we have said goodbye officially to our former general counsel, Vanessa Holton, who has been really just a stalwart presence here at the State Bar, at least since I've been involved. And so if the Board would permit me, I would like to read, I would like to read a resolution that we have crafted to memorialize, in words at least, many of the feelings that we have of gratitude towards Vanessa for her many, many years of service to the State Bar. Unfortunately, Vanessa could not be here this evening. She's no longer an employee. We couldn't force her to be here. But she truly, I think, will leave a legacy here at the State Bar. With that, let me read this resolution. Whereas the members of the Board of Trustees of the State Bar of California express our sincerest gratitude to Vanessa Holton for nearly seven years of tireless service to the State Bar, and whereas Vanessa Holton was the first general counsel to report directly to the Board of Trustees, and in that capacity, she established an independent legal office operating with the highest quality and integrity, and whereas Vanessa Holton has been a pivotal figure in the State Bar's efforts to transform itself into a regulatory agency, one not beholden to special interest groups or influential actors, and whereas Vanessa Holton has advised the Board of Trustees in a direct and straightforward manner, always telling it like it is, absolutely, whereas Vanessa Holton is recognized by her peers on the State Bar leadership team for understanding what needs to be done and working creatively and sometimes through the night to help the team achieve its goals, and whereas Vanessa Holton rigorously and with the highest ethics in mind worked to establish and refine a professional conflict panel known as the Rule 2201 program, and whereas Vanessa Holton selflessly volunteers her time through nonprofit work, working with young people who are striving for access to opportunity and equipping them to be the next-generation leaders, and whereas Vanessa Holton has demonstrated a deep commitment to the institution of the State Bar and the legal profession and has elevated the caliber and reputation of both, and now therefore be it resolved that the State Bar Board of Trustees expresses its deepest appreciation to Vanessa Holton for her significant contributions to ensuring that the State Bar of California truly fulfills its public protection mission. And once we have a vote on that, it will be adopted by, I hope, unanimous vote. Before we ask for a motion and a vote, I'd like to open the floor up to any trustees who would like to offer some words. We will make sure that Ms. Holton gets a copy of the video, and she will get a copy of this resolution as a small token of our appreciation.
Mr. Chair, this is Brandon.
Go ahead, sir.
So when I joined the Board about seven years ago, definitely a lot younger than I am now, but I always appreciated Vanessa and her straightforward approach. I never felt like she treated me differently because of my age or lack of experience and appreciated her drive and her desire to get things right, to transform the Bar into the best possible public agency that we can be. And she always has a mind, and still does, for public service. So she is going to be missed, and really want to thank her for her tirelessness in this resolution. I think it really tries to do justice to the amount of hours and the personal sacrifices that Vanessa made throughout her tenure at the State Bar. But I got to see a little bit of it, and it truly is astounding. So thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you, Mr. Stallings.
So I'll go next. Hi, Lynn Chen. When I joined the Board a number of years ago, Vanessa just stood out from the get-go. We were dealing with a lot of issues, including a lot of litigation here at the State Bar, and Vanessa's wise counsel and steady hand was always apparent. She showed such great leadership, and especially, I have to say, as a woman lawyer, seeing another woman lawyer help guide and lead the State Bar through such a tumultuous time was really something I was proud to see.
Thank you, trustee Chen. I think I heard someone else pop in there or try to.
Oh, yes. This is Sean.
Trustee Stallings, please. I'm sorry, trustee Sileg. And we just heard that. I apologize. It is late. Go for it, Sean.
Hey, no problem. I wish I could be there in person and even on video, so it doesn't do Vanessa justice to be talking in such a distant manner. But, you know, I've spoken about Vanessa before, and really, she's going to leave very big shoes to fill. She's been a superb general counsel. She's really everything you could hope for in a general counsel. She always gave us the straight advice, as the resolution stated, but often with a sense of humor and perspective. And she also brought a lot of wisdom from many, many years serving in state government. So I always appreciated her advice, but especially during my year as chair, I was very comforting to know that Vanessa was always available, even late at night, and she always had the best interests of the institution at heart. So we are going to miss her, but we want her to enjoy a well-earned retirement.
Indeed. Thank you, Sean. I think trustee Delann had also popped up there.
Yes, thank you so much. Again, I just, as a non-lawyer public member, I mean, Vanessa has just really helped me through, and I would like to thank her really. She's, whenever I have a question, she's so ready. She's very responsive, and at the same time, she would always, you know, be there ahead to let me know what's happening and what's going on. So I just want to thank Vanessa for your guidance, and I wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Delann. Can I have a motion on the resolution, please?
So moved.
This is Brandon. Move.
We have a motion by Cisneros, and a second by Stallings. May we have the roll?
Bratton? Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
De La Cruz?
Yes.
Delann?
Yes.
Noel? Trustee Noel? I think you're on mute, but I --
Yes.
Thank you. Sileg?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, two absent, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We'll make sure that Vanessa gets that resolution with our deepest gratitude and best wishes for a happy retirement. That takes us to the Executive Director's oral report.
Yes, and I did prepare a report for the Board with an overview of our DEI work, past and future. But I also wanted to make some remarks about Vanessa, and given the hour, I'm just going to do that. I will send the Board the DEI overview and post it for the September agenda, so I'm going to use this time. I just wanted to share a few thoughts about Vanessa. She is the fiercest woman that I know. When we started working together seven years ago, I was really taken aback by how direct she was, her relentless questioning, her seeming ability to always navigate to the result that she wanted. And I realized that I had met my match. I have such profound respect and appreciation for her, although she challenged me constantly, made me work harder than sometimes I needed to, and was a thorn in my side on many an occasion. The reality is that at the end of the day, after all of the back and forth, she has always helped me get this organization to where I thought it needed to be, and safely. We have rarely lost, in the legal sense, with Vanessa at the helm. When she and I came to the Bar, as Highland referenced, we found an organization in crisis. When she and I came to the bar, as Highland referenced, we found an organization in crisis. Morale was in the tank. Dysfunction lurked in every corner. Her partnership and stewardship, born of decades of experience in the state system, was absolutely instrumental to getting us to where we are today, when we talk about the new State Bar. I give her my respect and gratitude for the role she has played in the bar's evolution. A few things you may not know about her, one of them alluded to in the resolution, but Vanessa has deep roots in the labor movement, and credits some of her fighting spirit to that history and connection. She is passionate about mentoring and providing opportunities for youth. It is Vanessa that has single-handedly brought us our college internship program, and she has prodded, cajoled, and shamed many of us into taking on interns every year. Similarly, she cares deeply for her staff, investing countless hours in their development and growth. In fact, she has fought hard to do the right thing by all Bar staff. In that vein, I am sure that one of her proudest moments as the GC was doing right by an employee who was being bullied and harassed on the job. She is a compassionate and warm woman who feels deeply. Some of us have had the privilege to get to know her full self, not just the tough exterior that most see. And I am grateful to think that I am one of those people. And I'd like Luisa to share, and I hope Vanessa is watching us, my gift to her. This is my retirement gift. These are pink boxing gloves with our initials engraved. And I chose this because, as we've all alluded to, Vanessa can brawl with the bust of them. But she does so while wearing a beautiful suit, often with a tasteful piece of heirloom jewelry, a very classy woman. And I just want to say, I will truly miss my sparring partner. So thank you, Vanessa.
Yeah. Those applause are truly well-deserved. Thank you, Leah. That was beautiful. And Vanessa, wherever you are, thank you for the sparring that you did with Leah, because it has made the organization a better place. So bravo, brava to both of you. All right, that takes us to the consent calendar, noting that Mr. Stallings is recused from item 50.3. Brandon, would you like to announce the reason for your recusal from the record as required by the Political Reform Act, please?
Yes, I have a personal relationship with one of the candidates and refuse myself.
Thank you. With that, can I have a motion on the consent calendar?
This is Sonia Delan. I second.
Thank you. A motion by Cisneros, second by Delan. The vote, please.
Bratton, Chen.
Yes.
Cisneros.
Aye.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Delan.
Yes.
No.
Abstain.
I'm sorry, was that abstain? Thank you. Sleg.
Yes.
Shelby.
Aye.
Sol. Stallings.